Welcome to July 13, 2021.
It was red a second ago, Susan. Welcome to the July 13, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. We have four closed-session items. Madam Clerk?
Closed-session items for today, Tuesday, July 13. Item one, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel, re-existing litigation, California Sport Fishing Protection Alliance versus Eastern San Joaquin Groundwater Sub Basin Sustainability Plan at all, Stanislaus County Superior Court Case Number CV20001720. Item two, pursuant to government code 54657B1, public employment title, planning director. Item three, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel, re-existing litigation, Greer at all versus Calaveras County, Calaveras County Superior Court Case Number 18CV43460. Item four, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel, re-existing litigation, County OSHA's at all versus Amerisource, Bergen Drug Corporation at all in Re-Purdue Pharma LP at all.
Well done. Any public comment on any or all of these items? No, Ms. Callaway.
There is no public comment.
Okay, and I have one further announcement. Ms. Fuldorff is attending the meeting via Zoom today, and we will go into a closed session. Welcome back to the Tuesday, July 13, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We have nothing to report out on closed session at this time. We will be continuing closed session at the end of the meeting. Can we turn down the volume on the computer, please? Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Staff announcements. This is a time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public. Ms. Galino. We'll be right to you, Ms. Medina.
Good morning, Chair Stoppa, Honorable Board. Kathy Galino, your Economic and Community Development Director, and I just want to do a quick report out. Yesterday, we had Derek Kirk from the Governor's Office of Small Business, GoBiz, who did a tour of Calaveras, de tour de Calaveras. We started about 11:30, or 12:30, pardon me, in Mokil. We visited with Hotel Leger, Mokil Nets. Then we drove to Copperopolis, and we met with CV Properties, Tom Hicks, and talked about many of the infrastructure challenges that they're having in Copper. From Copper, we went to Angels Camp. We met with Lori Gianini, Debbie Ponti, Lori, of course, is with the fair, and three small business owners. From Angels Camp, we went up to Arnold. In Arnold, we met with Hinterhaus Distilling and met with Bonnie and Nate, and they talked about some of the challenges they had opening their business during the COVID pandemic. Trying to slow down here. Breathe. From Arnold, we went to San Andreas. We met with Nikki Stevens at Mark Twain Healthcare District at Dignity Health, talked about our healthcare challenges, the need for trained medical staff, the need for serving our communities in a holistic approach and providing care throughout the county. From San Andreas, we went to Valley Springs, and we met with Joel and Jamie Brandt at Grocery Outlet. It was a great tour. It went a little bit longer than we expected, but when Derek left, he had a good feeling of what Calaveras County is about, what our needs are, and some of our successes here in Calaveras.
Thank you, Ms. Galino.
Thanks.
Ms. Medina.
Good morning, Chair Stoppa, respective board members, Deputy Clerk of the Board, and our Calaveras community, Lisa Mclina, Environmental Management Agency. So, Calaveras Animal Services is pleading for volunteers from our community. We're looking for great people from our Calaveras community. We've had a very busy summer so far and need some extra hands. So if you have some time, please look at us for adding some of your time to our volunteer services. Just in June alone, our volunteers gave over 292 hours of their time to help us take care of our little and big ones in our shelter. So, what kind of things do our volunteers do? What do they help us with? They walk pups. They assist in socialization with exercise and play, which makes the dog or cats ready for adoption. Our volunteers also work with cats that are currently up for adoption and socialize them through mental stimulation and practice with being handled in different manners. They also assist with cleaning our kennels, dog and kitty kennels. They wash and dry bedding, towels and blankets. They also help clean our litter boxes, water and feed dishes. They also help organize our shelter and our kennels, groom and bathe animals. Volunteers help with special events such as free rabies clinics and our microchip clinics, which you see displayed during our Board of Supervisors meetings, and also our food drives. They educate the public on responsible ownership, and our volunteers act as shelter ambassadors and help spread the word and the mission of Calaveras County Animal Services throughout our community. Through education and positive attitude, our volunteers help build lasting relationships with the community we serve. If you are interested in becoming part of our Animal Services volunteer team, please visit our Animal Services website and click on the volunteer icon for additional information. You can also call 209-754-6509. Thank you, everybody, for your attention.
Thank you. Further staff comments?
Good morning.
Ms. Allen.
Good morning, Chair Stoppa, members of the Board. Corey Allen, Health and Human Services Agency Director. I wanted to just briefly update your Board and our community about this past weekend's extreme heat response. We did open a cooling center in response to those extreme heat, and that was between the dates of Friday and Monday. So, of course, this was done in partnership with our Office of Emergency Services, the Red Cross, and the County Library in San Andreas, staffed by the Health and Human Services Agency. The operation was led by Chris Edgerly, our Emergency Preparedness Manager, and, like I said, was staffed by several HHSA employees throughout the four-day period. On Friday, we received nine visitors. We had one on Saturday and three on Sunday. No one responded on Monday, but that was a total of 13 individuals that were provided support. The Red Cross provided food and water. The team strived to provide several signage points throughout the area. Flyers were sent widely to ensure community awareness, and that included being posted to the county website, social media, and through MyMotherload.com. I want to thank Chris Edgerly, Colleen Rodriguez with Public Health, John Osborne, Cameron Barwell, and Jeff Roberson, and, of course, all of the individual staff members who volunteered throughout the period. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Further staff comments?
I do not see any at this time.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the public health update. Informational item, Public Health Services receive an update presentation from staff on COVID-19 novel coronavirus. Ms. Allen, you're back. Breaking on ya, huh?
I apologize. I found I was muted.
We can hear you now.
Yes, you can. Thank you so much, and here we go. So, good morning, Corey Allen, your Health and Human Services Agency Director. Good to see you, Chairman Stoppa and members of the Board. I'm here today with your Health Officer, Dr. Ramirez, and today we want to make sure to give you an update on how things are going related to our coronavirus. As you can see, our COVID-19 -- let me forward that for you. All right, confirm you can see our current graph and numbers? Are you able to see our numbers?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So, what I wanted to show you is that today, we've seen forty, almost 47,000 tests have been conducted. Our data here is as of yesterday. We have climbed to 2,235 confirmed cases, of which 2,168 have recovered. Sadly, 58 have passed away, and that is up by two occurring in the month of June. There are no active hospitalizations as of now, and there are nine active cases. We have now conducted, as I mentioned, almost 47,000 tests, and just a little over 38,000 vaccines have been administered. The passing of our neighbors and our friends continues to give us pause within the Health and Human Services Agency and community as we try and rectify the differences between our right to choose to vaccinate and mask and the conflict of the health and safety of our loved ones. We send our most heartfelt sadness once again to this community and to the friends and loved ones of those who have not survived this pandemic. We urge our listeners to do everything you can to contain the spread. As far as vaccines go, you can see that 44.7% of our residents are completely vaccinated. 9.3% need their second dose, and that leaves 46% unvaccinated at this time. We continue to send our mobile van, and as of last week, 107 vaccines have been given. That is 46 first-dose Pfizer and 18 second-dose, with an additional 43 of our single-dose Johnson &amp; Johnson. Just to give you an update as to what we're continuing to do, we've seen between March and now 87 vaccine clinics offered throughout all districts in our community. Over 355 hours of vaccine clinic time have been offered. What do we need to continue to do to get ahead of this? Wear a mask if you're unvaccinated, especially in crowded and indoor spaces. Get tested if you're sick or if required by your workplace. Wear a mask while on transit, even if you're vaccinated. Please honor those masks and other rules established by businesses that you choose to frequent, and if traveling, wear a mask. Do not travel if you're not well, if you don't feel well. And don't expect that everyone is going to lift the same level of COVID-19 rules. Don't expect others to be fully embracing physical contact, and again, don't lose your proof of vaccination. What I want to do before I move along is see if Dr. Ramirez would like to weigh in on what I've offered best part.
Good morning, Calaveras County. Yeah, so just a quick tidbit regarding testing. We're aware that there are tests out there that include some home testing. I just want to advise the public that the home tests are not nearly as accurate as the PCR. So, if you are seeking some type of home test because of symptoms or other reasons, it would be in your best interests to follow up with a PCR test to verify the status of your test, the result of that test. And if you do have a positive test, please remember to go to the COVID website to isolate and keep yourself separated from others and follow the instructions as outlined on the website.
I also wanted to draw your attention back to the graph to demonstrate to you that we have had this uptick that we fully anticipated since the opening of the state in the middle of June. So, as you can see, that uptick is real, and it has faced us as anticipated. There's been lots of questions regarding the Delta variant and other variants. One question that we continue to see is, do we know how many of those who have tested positive have become ill or passed away had the Delta variant or any other variant? What we want to clarify is that variant testing is not done locally. It is done by the state lab, and not every sample is tested. Should every sample be tested, it would also not be representative because our samples are so low. Now, surrounding jurisdictions have the various variants identified, and we can, by virtue of that, assume those same variants occur in Calaveras. We will continue to have variants until more people get fully vaccinated. The next question, what will getting a vaccine really do at this point? Vaccination is by far the best way to prevent the spread of COVID, and another COVID surge could result in harm throughout our community, including illness, loss of life, and economic impact. Dr. Ramirez, do you want to offer more on that?
Again, we're saying more of the same. Last month in June, I was asked if a variant is here. It is here. It is around. The CDC now states that more than 50% of all COVID cases are attributed to the Delta variant. And the other sad statistic is now we are seeing a different group being more hospitalized. Previously, it was elderly, 65 and older. Now, for the first time, we're seeing that ages 18 to 49 people are actually being hospitalized at an increased rate than the elderly population. We need everybody to get vaccinated. I know it's the same message every time. And I don't know how many people in the audience are parents, but I think everybody can remember their parents and their parents kind of telling them stuff as they were growing up. But at one point in time, it almost felt as though, you know, your parents are nagging you, saying the same thing over and over, and it probably wasn't until sometime in your adulthood that you realized, hey, my parents actually knew something. It's the same thing with the Public Health Department. The entire time, we've been telling everybody, be cautious, be careful, COVID is out there. It's not going away. We warned you in June of this uptick. We're starting to see an uptick throughout the country. It's very simple. We need to get vaccinated. We need people to help us spread the word to get people vaccinated. We cannot do this alone. The Public Health Department, myself, Corey, Colleen, the rest of the Public Health Department, we can't do this alone. We need our community to rally and come together. Communities come together whenever we celebrate or we have natural disasters. This is probably the biggest pandemic in our lifetime. Hopefully, we don't experience another. So, it's mind-boggling that we cannot have some type of camaraderie amongst our community to come together. So, right now, right here, I'm going to call upon our leaders, our leaders in the community, the leaders of the Board of Supervisors, us. We're going to ask everybody to lead and do what leaders do. I thought as though leaders do orgate things amongst many others. They empower people. They inspire people. They lead the change, and they share vision. If somebody's house is on fire, you're going to call the fire department. The last thing we want is for the fire department to arrive and scrutinize the details right off the bat. How did it start? What are the details? No, we want everybody to extinguish that fire and put it out. I don't think anybody would want that fire to be partially put out, and unfortunately, that's where we are with COVID. We have a lot of partials. We are still very much in the middle of this pandemic, and we need all of us, our community leaders, our community, to come together to help us extinguish this COVID. And finally, I'm going to leave you with a great leader that I think John F. Kennedy and paraphrase quote him. Ask not what your community can do for you, but what you can do for your community, because it's very simple. You get the vaccine, you're making monumental progress for your community.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez.
Thank you. And with that, appointments continue to be available as our walk-ins at multiple sites throughout our county. Starting tomorrow, we have Mountain Ranch that will be in the evening hours. The following day, we'll be at the Diggins Mobile Home Community in Murphy's for the full morning. The next day, we've got West Point Elementary on July 16 in West Point, again, for the evening hour coverage. McCollum Hill at the library all day Saturday. San Andreas Library all day Sunday. We are there. We're there to meet the community where you are. With that, I do respectfully ask your Board to consider shifting from a weekly update on your COVID-19 response to an as-needed, more informal update, report out during department reports. Of course, that's completely at your discretion should you decide, and with that, we are here for any questions that you may have.
Any board questions or any input on the request by Ms. Allen just now for a more informal report? Ms. Callaway?
I support her request. I do have some questions, Dr. Ramirez or Ms. Allen. The people who are getting sick, what seems to be the way they're getting sick within the family, social environments, musical events, so forth, outside the county through work?
As an excellent question, we do have Colleen Rodriguez, our Public Health Deputy Director, who can respond to that.
Hi, Supervisor Callaway. This is Colleen Rodriguez. So, it's kind of all over the board. We do know that in Calaveras, we have always had and continue to have a high number of household transmissions. We also know that for folks who are not vaccinated and decide not to adhere to social distancing or and/or wear face covering, that is also an issue. There isn't one particular thing. I think one way to think about it also is that very few people in Calaveras just stay in Calaveras. Many folks work outside of the county. They go out of the county for recreation or for family. And so, if you look at all of our surrounding counties and really the entire state of California, that, you know, COVID still continues everywhere. So, it's, there's not one particular place. It's kind of all of it. And again, just reiterating what Dr. Ramirez said, the best way to prevent that is to get vaccinated.
So, just to echo Colleen's last statement, and not to sound contrary in that there is not one particular thing that's contributing to this, I would counter there is one particular thing. That one particular thing of people who are spreading COVID and who get COVID, that one common denominator is that the majority of these people are unvaccinated. Vaccines work, plain and simple. Look anywhere you want, online. Look at the data on the CDC. Look at our public, at our public health site. The majority of the people that come in for COVID-related complaints, especially COVID deaths, over 99.5% of COVID-related deaths are amongst unvaccinated individuals. That is the one common denominator. Here we are looking for nitty-gritty specifics. When your engine cracks because you don't change the oil or you forget to put oil in, at the end of the day, the engine is cracked. It's done because the oil was not put into the car. It's the same thing that we're seeing now. We need people to be vaccinated.
Okay, I have one question. Is that fine? With the upswing in cases and our low unvaccination, unvaccinated rate, is Cal OSHA or the Department of Public Health looking at taking other measures that we used to have or some permutation thereof?
Colleen?
Hi, Supervisor Callaway. So, the state is, the uptick in cases, not just in Calaveras but throughout the state, has definitely got the attention of the California Department of Public Health. They are very concerned because the current variants that are all around us and are here in Calaveras spread really quickly, and they make people more sick more quickly. And so, it's definitely got their attention. I have not heard of any, you know, of any, you know, thing coming back like what we had before with the tier system. That said, the Governor and the California Department of Public Health have always reserved the right to return to that should they deem that it is necessary. And so, more to come, but I haven't heard anything in the last few calls that I've had.
Okay, this one, Dr. Ramirez, if you've been vaccinated, what are the chances of your getting one of the variants?
So, the vaccines are actually holding pretty well against the variants at this point in time. Now, this is a virus, and a virus is mutated. The longer the virus is around, the more mutations can occur. With more mutations increases the risk of inefficiency to the vaccine. So, as of right now, the vaccines that are offered are doing very well against the variants. There are a number of different variants. We have Alpha, Beta, we have the Delta. We have the Lambda variant down in South America. The fact that this Delta variant is now responsible for more than 50% of cases that we see and that we're not even able to genome sequence all cases should be sounding off alarms to all public leaders. We need our public to be vaccinated so that we can have our best chance in fighting off this virus.
Okay, I have one more question. On the 87 clinics we've had, 355 hours, what has been the return on the investment of time? I mean, I sort of was proud to see 107 from the mobile, but I was at an event where the mobile, there were five staff people, I mean, the visiting medical team, and there was only one vaccination given that night from somebody I dragged over to them. So, I mean, that was a very expensive, it was very expensive to have four people there, five people there, and one vaccination. I was the one at McCollum Hill. There were also four or five people there. I don't know if they gave any vaccinations that night. I mean, how is that being paid for?
Well, thank you. I was going to say thank you, Supervisor Callaway, for leading change and inspiring somebody to get vaccinated. That's one life saved. If we could get other people to follow in your steps, that would be amazing.
Supervisor Callaway, I want to also offer that it is exactly why we shifted to a mobile operation. We were having to much more fully staff the large locations in order to ensure safe travel, safe entry and exit, and making sure there wasn't any contamination throughout the experience that individuals had during their vaccine. The mobile site is staffed by the state, so there is a savings to the county there, and then the county does support that operation as well. But it is a far less costly sort of method presently. It also is a reminder, when you see those incredibly low numbers, that that is the reality that we're having right now as we dip into each of the different pockets of our community. I mentioned it during our last report out. We have put several phone calls into different locations and have been asked to please not bring the mobile van. So, for what that's worth, I completely support what Dr. Ramirez has just stated, which is it's the leadership that you are providing that is making all of the difference. If it takes bringing a person yourself, that is exactly what it takes at this stage.
Thank you.
And if I, this is Colleen Rodriguez. If I get to say something And if I, this is Colleen Rodriguez, if I could just say something really quickly also. Every, so while the state is supplying the mobile van, we do continue to, in public health, do testing. And so it does take staff time and it takes, the preparation to do every one of those clinics is enormous, right? However, the cost of having someone get COVID in our community is exponentially higher. And so I just, if, if economics is the key to unlock people getting interested in protecting our community, then the best thing you can do to save our community money is to get vaccinated. And so I just want to make sure that people understand that connection is also there. So thank you.
And just, yeah, and just to remind everybody of the economics, I think it goes without saying that the biggest financial burden is when people are not working. We don't want that again. We want people to go on and be free with their lives, but we also need the community to be healthy and to be safe.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez. Mr. Toffenelli?
Yeah, I just have one question, it's not really, one clarification. I thought I'd heard Dr. Ramirez say of the nine current cases we have, that none of them have been vaccinated, they're all unvaccinated?
That is not true. That is not what I said. I said the majority of cases seen throughout the world are amongst unvaccinated individuals. I didn't speak to local statistics.
Can you speak to that now, the nine cases that we have, are they all unvaccinated?
I, you know, I wish I could. There is privacy amongst people and unfortunately, not everybody is forthcoming with regards to their vaccination status. But what we do know is that the majority of patients with COVID are amongst unvaccinated individuals.
Okay, thank you. Any further board questions? Public comment?
There is none at this time.
Thank you. So I'll bring it back to the board. Ms. Callaway said she was in support of Ms. Allen bringing this back more informally on not so much of a regular basis. Mr. Toffenelli?
I support that.
Mr. Garamidi?
Yeah, but if things change, we're going back.
Ms. Fohlendorf?
Yes, I support it. But if things change, I think more information.
Yes. So I, you know, and I also agree. So Ms. Allen, please, if, if things change and we start going in a bad direction, we can redecide at that time, but until that time, you know, as needed?
Yes, that's wonderful, thank you. Of course, everything's changing all the time, so I will stay in touch with your board as I have been, so that we can continue to keep our thumb on that pulse together.
Thank you very much, Ms. Allen.
Absolutely.
If there's nothing further, thank you, Ms. Allen, and thank you, Dr. Ramirez, for your time. And Colleen Rodriguez, I also, thank you, Ms. Callaway. We do appreciate your time. We'll move on to general public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matters which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. Public comment. We have someone in the audience. Good to see you, sir. Just jump right up there.
Come on in.
Good morning. This is the first time before you guys. My name is Richard Peters. I am the Calaveras County Toys for Tots Coroner. I don't really like coming before the board because I'm trying to do everything myself for the students. I've been doing this for three years now, Toys for Tots. We've gone from 640 kids that we've given toys to, last year I gave out toys to 1,119 children. Each one of those children got at least 10 toys. So we're making an impact on them now. My problem is now, and the reason I'm coming to you guys, I need a space. I'm using the Toytime Smart Storage right now. Donna, the owner, has been really generous in letting us use the space, but because they're growing, she needs our space. Unfortunately, my foundation won't let me use my funds for that, so I'm looking for you guys to maybe give me some guidance on where I could find a building.
Thank you. We can't respond directly to, to comments. If you could leave your contact information?
Yes.
And I'll have the CAO contact you and we'll see what we can work on.
Cool, appreciate it.
Thank you. Further public comment? If there's nothing further, Mr. Richard. What was your last name again?
Peters.
Peters, okay, I did write it down, correct. Mr. Peters, thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Further public comment?
No further public comment.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They'll be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Any board, or any staff want to remove any items?
Good morning, Chair Stoppa, Honorable Board, Kathy Galino, Economic and Community Development Director. I need to pull item 15. My apologies, I was working on two amendments and agreements with UCC-E, and when I uploaded the document, I uploaded the incorrect one, so I need to pull that item. I will come back on the 10th of August with both items corrected. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Kevin Rajio, Calaveras County Coroner, Public Administrator, I'd like to pull item number 14 for discussion. Thank you.
Now, with that, I'll entertain.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, I'd like to abstain from voting on number 12, but?
Item 12?
Yes, sir. And with that, I'll make a motion if you like.
A motion by Mr. Garamidi?
Oh, second.
A second by Mr. Toffenelli. I'm going to do roll call as Ms. Fohlendorf is visiting via Zoom today. So, Ms. Fohlendorf? Aye? Or nay?
Aye.
Mr. Toffenelli?
Aye.
Ms. Callaway?
Aye.
I'm an aye, Mr. Garamidi.
Aye with an abstention on number 12.
Unanimous for all but 12, one abstention. So let's see, we have item 12, Ms. Galino, we'll go ahead and move that to the August meeting. Thank you very much.
15.
Oh, 15, I apologize. Okay. I wrote it down the wrong order. Item 12 is abstained from, that's, okay. Item 14. Mr. Rajio?
I have some questions. First of all, can't remember the last time, this is regarding salaries for elected officials. Can't remember the last time there was a raise or an increase in salary. But I'd like to see some justification, some discussion as to why this agenda item only includes the assessor, the recorder, the tax collector, and the auditor. Historically, the coroner's office has been included with the five, with those five elected officials. I also realize that the sheriff and the district attorney have been left out of this, so the three of us basically have been left out. And I was wondering why, so I'd like to hear some discussion and so forth and maybe this could all be done at the same time. So my question is, what's going on? For lack of, for lack of a better question, so.
Ms. Hawkins?
Yes, Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Management Director. So the review of these, these elected officials did start several years ago, and when we were doing the scope of work, it was, we did specifically work on bringing these elected officials who their salaries have been tied for years. I did not bring the coroner and forward, that position is very, it is complicated. And we are looking at possible changes with that position. And just like we did not bring forward the, the DA or sheriff at this time, and we are doing the class and comp study, which with the class and comp study, they are doing desk reviews, which means they will in-depth review the positions and then compare those to like counties, to make sure that we are properly reviewing them because the, of course, the coroner, when I say that it is more complicated, it is not a department head position, as in they have a full department underneath them within the county structure. It's, it's a little bit different, and so we were, we were relying on the class and comp study for those three positions.
So is the coroner involved in the, are they doing a study as far as the coroner, the sheriff, and the DA, or if so, why not?
We, so we will, the class and comp study is all classifications. We are doing further review into all classifications within the county. And that process is taking place now. We are putting together the documents that each department head and employee will fill out, and that will set off that desk audit.
So will this be voted on today, or it sounds to me like you should combine the five and possibly vote on that once the study is, is in?
And so the reason of these, these specific positions is, over the years, the, the bargaining units have given increases to their positions, which now have created this severe compaction within the departments. And because of the structures within these departments, that is why we are trying to get this, this rectified at this time.
Okay, I mean, this being an elected position, you know, we answer to the people. Like I say, it just sounds like they should be combined. It's always been historically the five with the sheriff and the DA separate, but I would like to see it, you know, myself grouped in with the five, the other four elected officials. So that's what I've got.
Thank you, Kevin. Any further public comment?
Amanda has her hand up.
Okay, yeah, no, absolutely. I was, I was going to bring it back to the board after we provide for public comment.
Okay, sorry, just interrupting, I'm going out here.
We appreciate it.
No public comment at this time.
Ms. Fohlendorf?
Sorry.
Oh, we do have one.
Debbie Ponti?
Ms. Ponti. My apologies, Ms. Fohlendorf, can we let Ms. Ponti comment real quick first?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Do we have Debbie on there? Let's circle back if she can't get on. Ms. Fohlendorf, go ahead and go forward with your, your comments, please, and then we'll get back to Ms. Ponti when we can get her through.
One of the questions that I discussed this with Chris Easter the other day is recognizing that this position has been removed from the list of the elected, is there any consideration? And I understand that the board's having conversations of what is the future of it look like, but we're still a ways away from that. I don't think it's, I feel like we're not being inclusive in all of the positions. And with the timeline of the work, the comp study, maybe Judy can highlight what that timeline looks like, but would there be a consideration of just bringing back that position and adding into the group, or going forward with this and coming back at a next meeting, or regular meeting with just the coroner's salary increase? Because I feel like there's kind of two things going on, and yes, we're still having a dialogue that's still not inclusive to the rest of the elected board members, and they're still, what, two years, year and a half, what, of that position? And they're still under the, the normal percentage of the rest of us. So I'm looking at it from a position, not the dialogue that we've been having with our workshops, to make sure we're more inclusive with the positions. And Judy, do you know what the timeline would be if it's grouped in with the DA and the sheriff?
So we are, we are set to have all of the, the data, our timeline set up to bring it back prior to recommended budget for next year, which was the direction by the board. Because we are doing full studies of the positions, not just getting base wages and comparing base, base wage to base wage, we are actually digging in to each position and doing a comprehensive study. The study, we've, you know, whittled it down to being able to get it done in, in, under a year.
Well, is there any, I guess it goes back to the board, the rest of, do, do we want to be more inclusive and make sure we're focusing on all of working department head electeds, or are we going to stay around of these work, of these study groups until we figure out what we're going to do with coroners or, I mean, I think that's kind of the elephant in the room. And I, I think it should be focused more on the position, not the other conversations that we've been having at this point. But that's just my, my thoughts and, yeah.
Very good, Ms. Fohlendorf, I couldn't agree more. Do we have Ms. Ponti?
Yes, we do.
Supervisor Ponti?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, supervisors. I'd like to comment on this particular item because it just is very confusing to me and would like some clarification. So I know this study session back in August, or excuse me, April, there was some indication about the pays were out of scale and needed studies needed to be done, et cetera. And I, I very much support that, and I truly believe that the wages in comp are totally behind the, behind the eight ball and something needs to be done. And so I appreciate the effort going into this. My concern is the study. If this study was commissioned two years ago and it still hasn't been done yet, I don't see it happening anytime soon. Meanwhile, these wages fall further and further behind and it'll be even more challenging to catch up. So I'm just wondering why all of the electeds aren't considered one elected bunch? So I'm just wondering why all of the electeds aren't considered one elected body. Granted, the positions are very, very different and, you know, I think county staff should be able to figure that out as we move forward with this particular study on how to look at things and break them down. I also know that there is discussion about moving or consolidating the coroner's office into another county department, and that's for discussion later on. I think this particular issue on wage and salary, there are two separate issues that soon you'll have to make a decision on what to do. This will go out to the folks to vote on one way or the other for this particular position. And, you know, I think it's important, there's a year and a half left in this particular office, both for sheriff and such. And so if it's not treated as one, I think that sends a not-so-nice message out to the public about why the supervisors are picking and choosing who gets what and why and trying to explain and justify that. So I think it just needs to be looked at as one body unit and a decision made at once and everybody gets whatever the results of the survey indicates. But to pick and choose and do it halfway and thinking about this and maybe that going down the future, those are a lot of what-ifs and none of this will get done if it's not tackled head-on now. So I just look at it from a point of view of it's very confusing. I don't understand why it's not just one group of people as electeds and staff being able to break it down and justify the jobs and the kinds of jobs and that sort of thing. So I would encourage the board to revisit this and consider it as one group and set some target deadlines for county staff to get this back to you for a decision to be made quickly.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ponti. Was there anything further? I'm sorry.
No, that's all I have.
Any further public comments?
No further public comments.
You know, I was debating on pulling this item, so I'm glad someone else did. I haven't been in favor of moving forward with this. I think there's very good points put forward of considering all the elected bodies elected being considered at the same time as an entire body. And I also think that the compaction rate and that argument somewhat is outside the box just because, look, we're taking our raises prior to everyone else's because we're supposedly holding them back. First of all, there's nothing that says elected official needs to make more than employees. But second of all, those employees aren't getting their raises until the class and comp study is being done. So that compaction rate, you know, it makes more sense to me to do it as the entire body. But that's where I stand. That's where I started. That's where I'll end it. And the rest of the board can make their decision based on that. Any further board comments?
Based on everything.
Based on everything, Mr. Toffenelli. I apologize.
I have a couple of comments. And I understand, Kevin, where you're coming from. And I understand a couple of emails from the DA and the sheriff and what was presented to us at the time we voted on. And it's true, what Judy's saying, that those four positions have gone through that scrutiny and have, we've been, it's been around for quite a while, they've been asking for that. However, Judy just mentioned that they will be bringing that comp study before our final budget, which is only a little, not that far away, we're already at July 13th. Am I correct in saying that, Judy, that you said that it will be completed and presented to us by the time final budget is here?
No, recommended next year. There's no way we could get a budget.
Recommended next year, not this year. All right, I misunderstood you. I thought you meant for this coming budget, recommended.
There's no way we could get, all we would be able to pull at that timeframe would, at best, be base rates.
And there's no way those three positions can have, be completed before this year's final budget?
So, I mean, I, we, the human resources staff can pull all of that information and bring forward to you. We don't have to have an outside agency do it.
Well, I have a separate issue, excuse me, with this, and I was gonna pull it too. I had mentioned, excuse me, when we voted on this, that we could give Judy a letter if we did not want to accept the raise until a certain time or at all. And I was thinking about doing that until all of the work comp study and all that was brought to us and everybody was given whatever's gonna happen at that time. However, I'd met with county council and, yes, we can do that. However, we need to have a board-approved policy allowing for it. And there's no board policy at this time allowing for us to do that. And I asked her to draft something and bring it to the board. So I would like to pull this item at least till final budget and give Sarah time to bring that policy before to board and maybe see if we can get Judy to do a comprehensive study for the other three and consider them as final budget.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Ms. Coway, you have something to say?
Yeah, I don't support that. This has been going on for these four positions for, when I was on my sabbatical. And what we're doing is kicking the can and mixing the issues. I support what Supervisor Toffenelli says is bringing back a policy for the board, and I don't know if it's the board or any elected position, to not accept the salary increase. This is always a controversial issue with the board. And this is here, this has been before us. We're not being fair to these positions to ask that it be held. If Ms. Hawkins said that she can have the other three elected positions before us, before final budget, to me, that is appropriate, that we're taking care of the other three electeds. I don't think we should hold up these four positions because we don't have a policy for the board. I believe we should just move on this and, out of respect for those four positions and what has occurred over the last, I don't know how many years, four years, and let's move on with this. In addition, then, we can have staff bring back what you're recommending as a separate policy issue, which should not be tied to this. And then third, the other three elected positions will be brought to the board before final budget. So I'd like to move or modify the, modify the motion.
Mr. Toffenelli, are you willing to modify your motion or does it sit as stated?
No, I consider it, but I don't see what 30 days is gonna make a difference. I mean, at least all five, all the electeds will come to court at one time.
Because the 30 days, then there's 30 days on top of the 30 days. And it could be.
Not if we do it at final budget, that's in within the budget.
Well, final budget might be into, be when? In September?
No.
It's in September, yeah.
Should be at the end of August.
No, so our recommended, our final hearings will begin somewhere around September 8th and then the budget will be brought back the fourth week of September with operative date of October, oh, sorry, retract, of operative date of July 1.
I mean, we heard what the coroner said. You said you've received the emails from the DA and the sheriff. I didn't, but I heard you did. So, I mean, that's fine. We do the three of them, we do them at final budget or prior to, and let's approve this as presented and not drag it out. It just isn't fair to those four elected positions. So let's just.
That's here, the rest of the board has to say.
Any further comments to the point or a second to Mr. Toffenelli's motion?
I agree with Maria. Let's just get it done.
Ms. Fuldorff?
I think we should continue with this, but I want to see those other three positions back before final budget.
Okay, so I'll second your motion.
Can you restate the motion so we can know what we're talking about?
Yeah, the motion was to bring this back at final budget and bring back the three positions of coroner, DA and sheriff at that time too, along with the policy that Sarah is adopting or crafting in order for us to write a letter if we don't want to accept the raise.
Ms. Fuldorff? Is that what you heard?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, but I don't want to put this out, so no.
You don't want to look, you want to go forward with this now?
I want to go forward with this item now and then bring the other three positions back in 30 days with the policy.
So there's no second?
Then second.
I second. So roll call, all those in favor of Gary's motion. Ms. Fuldorff?
No.
Mr. Toffenelli?
Aye.
Ms. Coway?
No.
Ben Stoppers, aye. Mr. Garamendi?
No.
No. Do we have another motion?
I move we adopt an ordinance approving the salary changes for the elected officials as stated in the summary publication.
We have a motion by Ms. Coway. We have a second by Mr. Garamendi. Roll call. Ms. Fuldorff?
Aye.
Mr. Toffenelli?
No.
Ms. Coway?
Yes.
I'm a no.
Yes.
I'd like to then just make the recommendation that Supervisor Toffenelli did, that we bring back the other three prior to final budget and the policy change.
I don't think we need a four-fifths vote on that, do we? No, so it passed on your motion three-two.
That's correct.
Right, all right, all right.
Well, she just made a second.
Right, no, bring back the policy.
Yeah.
Right, I understand that.
Bring back the policy and the other three positions.
Right.
At final.
Gary, can you move?
I'm sorry. Bring back a policy for us to be able to not accept the raise and signing a letter and also bring back the other three positions.
Okay, understood. That ties up our consent agenda, so I'm gonna take a ten. We're gonna take a ten.
Oh, I thought you were just gonna leave us here and continue.
They're all over me today, Gary.
Regular agenda, action item, administrative office, adopt bylaws for the Strategic Planning and Financing Committee. Ms. Bonlata?
Good morning, Mr. Chairmembers of the Board, Krista Bonlata from the Administrative Office. As you'll recall, your board directed the formation of a standing Brown Act Committee called the Strategic Planning and Financing Committee. The committee has met three times and we've got our next meeting scheduled for the end of July. We meet on an annual basis. One of the endeavors that the committee has taken up to date was to review and recommend, provisionally approve and recommend that these bylaws be brought to your board. I will note one correction, which would be that rather on meeting on the third Monday of each month, the board would meet the fourth Monday of each month. In any event, per board discussion at the time of the formation and approval of the committee, the board requested that and suggested that annual appointments be made in January along with the appointment of the Chair of your board and Vice Chair and to have the committee be evaluated at that time. So in addition, the committee would make regular, as needed, reports out to your board, which it's contemplating now, and two separate occasions, and we can have a more robust discussion about that when we discuss the study sessions for the second portion of the calendar year, which will happen on January 20th of this month. Are there any questions?
Mr. Toffenelli?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. This finance committee does not have a separate budget of its own, correct?
That is correct. All appropriations would go through this.
Go ahead.
All appropriations would go through your board and be part of existing budget units, so in the typical budget process or by standalone agenda items.
Okay, so then I have a question about item number five, or number five here under Article Two. Members receiving compensation associated with their appointment?
So that provision is there because many of the committees, these are templated bylaws that then we amended and modified to meet the criteria of the committee as it exists. And while it is true that at this moment in time, there is no member of the committee that is not also a county employee.
Correct.
Were that to be the case, then this language would be here. So rather than having to add it back in at some future date, it's here now. Should your board direct us to strike it, we certainly can do. There is no contemplation or legal avenue for any member of the committee to receive additional compensation if, in fact, they're an employee at the county.
Well, that's kind of what I was making a point, that in order for this to be in there, it would have to have its own budget. Otherwise, you're going around and we don't know, you're saying it's part of the board's budget. I'm not sure where this would be. I would like to see it removed, myself, item number five. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, but I don't see any reason to have it in there with the members that are on there and not having a budget of its own.
Understood.
Well, I'm sure glad another supervisor agrees with me. I read that, wait a minute. If the, if the committee chose to hire a consultant to help them, that would still be an item that would come back to the board. The board, the committee has no authority to do that.
The committee has no inherent spending authority whatsoever. So appropriations would be made by your board as they always are throughout the year in the ordinary course of the budget process, some standalone agenda items. Theoretically, the county departments can always enter into certain types of agreements if they have appropriations in their budget up to certain thresholds. However, given the nature of the formation of this committee, I don't anticipate making, we wouldn't do that. We would bring back reports out and make recommendations regarding contracts, et cetera, to your board. to your board for approval. I invite the supervisors or other committee members to jump in here and comment should they wish to do so. But the idea, the simple nature of the committee is to be transparent and do some of the late work that is not feasible to do at the board level, but still make the recommendations and have the ultimate decision-making be done by your board as a whole.
So Ms. Von Latta, if the committee chooses to, they're analyzing tech services, and then they, they want someone from tech services to come be part of the meeting. So tech services, how do they then charge their time? I mean, how is your time charged? How is the audit, how is the, somebody's still paying for time even though they have no budget. But since you work 24/7, we, we've got you, but
You've got me pretty well accounted for. And I would argue that the same is true. The work of this committee is squarely under all of the job descriptions of the members of it. So in terms of actually charging back, we would literally be charging one general fund department back to another. It's not even
So what if it was not general fund? Let's say we're talking health and human services.
Again, I argue that, that the work of the committee and to the extent that we have input from affected staff members, that that is, their compensation, their weighted hourly rate for actually participating in that committee would be fairly underneath their existing job description. We're certainly not looking to ask any particular department head or staff member to carry the load. Were we to do that, we would certainly work with the Auditor and Controller's Office and make sure that Human Resources and Council are in agreement in terms of whether we needed to make any such reimbursements. And if so, we wouldn't need to create a budget unit from, for the committee itself. We would rather probably make those reimbursements from the administrative office budget or another appropriate budget, depending on the situation.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Fuldorff, Mr. Garamendi?
I have no objection to moving number five.
Ms. Fuldorff?
I have no objection to moving that.
I'm in agreement also.
Understood, it shall be removed.
Any further comments to this or can I call for public comment? Right, public comment.
There is no public comment at this time?
All right, I'll entertain a motion as amended. Mr. Garamendi?
Aye.
Miss Fuldorff for a motion, a second by Mr. Garamendi. Roll call vote, and when you speak, please turn on your mics. Ms. Fuldorff?
Aye.
Mr. Toffenelli?
Aye.
Ms. Coway?
Aye.
I'm an aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Garamendi's an aye. That's five oh. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Regular agenda item 25, resolution, Human Resources. Adopt a resolution authorizing additional changes to the position control list and adopt new descriptions effective July 17, 2021, for the year 2021-22 recommended budget.
Good morning.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I bring before you a resolution that is, of course, tied to our recommended budget. These are positions that we were, are still, we're still working on. And then also the changes for our administrative office as directed by the board to the CAO. And then also I do have an additional change on here that was not within the recommended budget, but we are transferring a position from risk management to public works, which is the safety specialist. By doing this, it allows risk management to audit the compliance of the safety specialist. And then also public works, since they, this position used to be in public works, they are able to give it the administrative support that HR with the pandemic were a little bit
Just a quick question with the changes past initial budget, will the, will we need a four-fifth vote at this time or are we fine moving forward?
So we're fine moving forward. The changes that are being requested can be absorbed by the budget unit itself. They're not actually, as it relates to the administrative office, the first year, the delta would be approximately $21,000 more than what's currently budgeted for those positions. So that can be absorbed. As it relates to the public works, Human Resources changed for that analyst position, safety analyst position, the net general fund will be the same and those funds already have been included, as well as the changes for the library.
Thank you. Any further board questions? With that, we'll do public comment.
There is no public comment.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion by a board member.
I'll move this item.
Thank you, Ms. Coway. Do we have a second?
Sorry.
A second by Mr. Garamendi, continues not to turn on his microphone. Second. Thank you, Mr. Garamendi. Roll call, Ms. Fuldorff?
Aye.
Mr. Toffenelli?
Aye.
Ms. Coway?
Aye.
Ben Stoppers an aye. Mr. Garamendi?
Aye.
Very good. Passes on five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item, regular agenda item 26, resolution, OES, approve a resolution adopting the multi-jurisdiction hazard mitigation plan. Mr. Osborne?
Good morning, Lord, there I am. Good morning, Mr. Chair and honorable board members. Before you is a resolution to adopt the multi-jurisdiction hazard mitigation plan. Most of what you have heard in the past would be called a local hazard mitigation plan that's required by the federal code of regulations. And in this instance, what you see is a multi-jurisdictional plan. The difference between a local and a multi is we partnered with the City of Angels Camp as well as Murphy's Sanitation District to create a combined plan. And so that didn't change what we did or how we did it. It just changed that we weren't doing it as a county by ourselves. So the goal of the multi-hazard mitigation plan is to help reduce or eliminate long-term risk and loss to people and property from natural hazards and to make Calaveras County more disaster resistant and better able to recover when disasters affect the county. We do that through, through a very structured process that is very inclusive of our, not only our community, but our other stakeholders, such as special districts and other governmental entities across the county. We have been working on this for about six months and the final product is what you see before you today. The last hazard mitigation plan was updated in about 2016 or 2017. And to highlight any differences, our five goals remained essentially the same and those goals appear on page 314 of the mitigation plan. I'm sorry, I don't have the corresponding, the corresponding packet number, page number for you guys, for you folks. But our goals remain the same and the, one of the main differences, so a couple of main differences. First, as we moved through this project with our consultant, we found some historical inaccuracies that we were able to correct as far as historical fire data and other disaster data. We were able to look at our hazards that we have historically looked at and use several inputs that have changed since 2016, such as population growth, climate change, and a few others, to actually not only just look at our risks as they apply to the county, but apply that one step farther and rank our hazards. We ranked 12 hazards, the number one being wildfire, number two being drought, number three, severe weather, extreme heat, number four, climate change, number five, severe weather, winter storms and extreme cold, six, extreme wind, seven, flooding, eight, debris flow slash landslide, nine, dam failure, 10, earthquake, 11, land subsidence or sinkholes, and 12, volcano. We made our best efforts to rank those accordingly. I'm now scratching my head about number 10 considering last week. However, those were the risk scores that, and how they rank. I think that's an important piece of this new plan for us in that it allows us to set priorities based on data about where we should be spending our mitigation time as well as our preparedness and response.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne. You know, not, thank you for the work and not to take away from the importance of this. Your background, is that the USS Enterprise model NCC 1701D?
Well, I, I prefer to call this my dream EOC, but that's where it may have came from.
Okay. Thank you. Board comments or questions? Okay, public comment?
There is no public comment.
I'll bring it back to the board if there's no questions or comments. Mr. Toffenelli?
I'll move this item, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli, a motion by Mr.
I'll second.
And a second by Mr. Garamendi. Nice microphone action, I appreciate it. Ms. Fuldorff?
Aye.
We have an aye. Mr. Toffenelli?
Aye.
Ms. Coway?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Mr. Garamendi?
Aye.
Thank you, passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Osborne.
You're welcome and thank you and the board members.
We'll move on to supervisor announcements in compliant with government code 53232.3D. Board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or report out. Ms. Fuldorff?
Nothing to avoid.
Thank you. Mr. Toffenelli?
Wait a minute, nothing to report, weren't you in the British Virgin Islands? You don't want to tell us about your trip?
Did the county pay for her trip?
No, but the other things she can bring up, she can report out.
It looks like she's ignoring you.
I, Maria and I have a AFCO meeting next Monday night here, 5:00. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. Ms. Coway?
No, the death ride is this weekend. The White Pines Car Show and Murphy's Communities Homecoming Days. So it'll be a fun-filled weekend.
Thank you, Ms. Coway. I have nothing to report. Mr. Garamendi?
I'll be attending the RCRC Executive Committee meeting tomorrow in Sacramento.
Thank you. With that, we'll adjourn.
We'll go back in the call session.
Oh, yes, we will be going. Thank you, Ms. Edwards, always right there for me.
Thank you.